I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please silence cell phones, pagers, and such. Item number one, citizen concern.
Rushing to the mic.
I see the citizens are all employees. Item two, approval of the agenda. I motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items passed unanimously and thus a separate vote is requested by a board member. Item three, approval of the minutes of the November 20, 2018 special meeting, approval of the minutes of the November 20, 2018 regular meeting. Item four, approval of claims. Item five, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorized chairman to sign medical plan renewal. Item six, board administration, approval of funds for the holiday luncheon on December 18 of 2018. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? I move approval of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. I believe it passes five to zero. Since we have a set time of 4:45 for secondary roads and a first reading, I will move forward to item eight, reports on committee meetings. Mr. Taylor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, we had a Rolling Hills meeting and...
Can you try to be long-winded on this?
I planned to go way past 4:45, so we might have to continue on the other side. So, we discussed Woodbury County's transition plan, and the board opted in favor of direct management of the CEO, a potential site supervisor instead of a consultant or a co-manager model. But they also graciously stated that if the CEO was feeling overwhelmed, she'd come back to the governance board. They also discussed Woodbury County's non-core funding and had a robust discussion. Some of the highlights were adult services as the charge of the regions. It's not yet a juvenile system, and there's some new legislative mandates that have a whole host of implications for access centers and other things that are going to have to be funded. At the same time, they are sensitive to the fact that maybe the juvenile system is going to be something that legislate, the legislature's going to mandate, so what do they do in this interim year? So, that was a discussion. There were, there was a legislative forum afterwards, and we tried to make very clear to the legislators that if they mandate a juvenile system and there's no funding accompanying, I know the legislature would never do such a thing as an unfunded mandate, but that's going to be to the degradation of services that are already here right now. So, tomorrow, Dennis Butler, myself, Patty, Teresa, who else?
Dennis Butler.
Yeah, two other Rolling Hills supervisors and the CEO. We're all going to sit down and go through this budget and see what we can and cannot afford, and what is our budget target. So, I look forward to that. There's a new wrinkle the board really needs to be apprised of, and we were just talking a little bit with PJ about this issue. Right now, the Department of Management is stating that we cannot levy at the Rolling Hills rate per capita max until we have a signed 2080 agreement. That would cap us at Sioux Rivers rate as it is right now. That's a, that's a problem for us, so we need a signed 2080 agreement with Rolling Hills. However, Rolling Hills, putting on their hat, they want to have the provisions of the MOU, including the million dollars upfront, before they sign the 2080 agreement, and we can't do that until we get to their per capita max. So, we are working out some potential language to be able to make that a provision or a stipulation. I think we can get there, and PJ was helping us to navigate that a little bit. Do you have time for just a couple more things? And then we talked about the MCOs, and I thought it was a very poignant provider from Genesis. I forget his name, but he just talked about four problems with the MCOs in this model. Pre-authorizations are late, it knocks people off of services, they cut rates, and people, providers don't get paid. And he just talked about oversight being needed and maybe not-for-profit MCOs. And he wasn't there to just grouse and complain. I think he was very solution-oriented, but that's something I'd like to see us advocate as a region and all regions for a better model for our providers. So, that was probably long-winded, but if you have any questions over anything, let me know.
Jeremy, is there a budget deadline, or is there a deadline for the 2080 besides the one with the budget in March?
No, there's, there's not. Their, their biggest thing is going to be that we can cover our expenses, and so it'll be, I anticipate tomorrow will be very helpful, especially with two of their supervisors traveling here, to get a budget target. We had talked in the past about that being $3.3 million. I think their biggest thing is that we have to live within our means, and we have to be able to levy as the 2080 allows for to be able to cover our expenses for that first year. So, I don't think there's an otherwise artificial deadline other than to, to stay within that. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah.
And I think to the other point, Matthew, is that they, it would probably be helpful for us to take up this budget earlier in the budget process, say, early in January, so that we can give them those assurances that we're both living within our means and able to raise that which, you know, if we pass and receive the budget, I think that'll send the right signal rather than just one person giving that assurance.
I totally agree. We've certainly done that in the past, and there's not a changeover on the board, so we can do that if the chairman would, that sounds good to you, Rocky.
Dennis.
Rolling Hills is going to have their regular region meeting, but they are going to have one before that where they're going to make decisions on any juvenile-funded program at that meeting. That's going to be before the region meeting. It's toward the end of the month, they're having one before that, where they're going to discuss and make decisions so these, everybody knows where they're going with the juveniles.
Well, in any non-core funding for that matter?
Non-core funding, yes, which bases the juvenile programs.
But you have Schessler Hall?
Yep, that's them too. They had a list, everybody that came to the region at that one meeting where they made their presentations, they're going to decide about December 25th or 4th, something like that. Then they have their regular region meeting a week later or later that week.
The other thing I think the public and our board should know is that not only do we have two supervisors coming tomorrow, traveling from Buena Vista in Cherokee, but then you have a host of others that are traveling here to tour the Friendship House, the Crisis and Stabilization Center, the Sanford Center. I think that says a lot, Schessler Hall, that these supervisors are traveling some, quite a distance to tour all of those programs. I think that's a good thing going forward, that they're willing to take the time to do that, and so that's appreciated.
Anything else?
Sorry, it wasn't longer.
Sioux Rivers met today. The acceptance of Lyon County was passed, the affirmation of Woodbury County's withdrawal was passed. So, those two things were done. Their annual report that was due to DHS was passed. That's about it on that.
Sure. Michelle, I was talking to Dennis today. You have, Christmas is on Tuesday, and the first is on Tuesday. What are your plans for the meetings?
We need one the first business day after, don't we?
Second, we need one. And then, as far as paying bills, what kind of impact will that have, Michelle?
Well, if we don't have one on the 5th and the 1st, then we would have to need our APs to be in by, the 19th would not be paid until after the 7th of January. That's a three-week gap if we don't have a special meeting to approve the accounts payable bills.
So, you want to do one, so we're off Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday the 26th? Would we have a special meeting to pay bills on the 26th then?
Could we maybe go to the 28th, like on a Friday?
Well, if it was in the morning, I'd set a...
21st payroll, and December 4th is payroll.
If you were able to have a meeting in the morning, if you have afternoon payroll, they're not going to get paid until a working day.
So, what day should we have it?
Which would work?
Pardon?
If, if you're thinking of not having a meeting the 25th or the 1st, then I'd say if you have a meeting on around the 28th, and then we could get the bills pushed out either the afternoon of the 28th if you have a meeting in the morning, or we could get them pushed out on the 31st.
We will have a meeting on the 2nd.
Right.
Oh.
So, you get claims approved on the 2nd, just like it'd be a regular board meeting on the 2nd, because we may even be looking at budgets on the 2nd too. I plan to have them looks out to you before Christmas. But the 25th is on a Tuesday, so why don't you just move your meeting to the 26th? Normally, you don't meet between Christmas and New Year's, but to get bills paid, the 26th would probably work.
And we could just have, you could have just a meeting just to pay the bills as you get three of, three of the year, the 26th.
Have we done that by phone in the past, or?
Not usually, no.
Not usually, okay. Well...
Board members plan to be in town?
I, I plan to be in town, so I'll be available.
I'll be available the 26th.
I'll be in town. I'd prefer to maybe do it, since I work that day, like 10 to 10, I'd like to maybe stop in 9:00 AM or something if we're going to do that then.
Is there an issue with going at a?
No.
9:00 AM on the 26th?
No.
That works fine for me.
That works.
Okay.
And you have a meeting January 2nd, just a regular board meeting.
Did you hear that, Matthew?
Yeah.
So, December 26th, 0900. And January 2nd?
Regular time?
At regular time, that is, well, that's a Wednesday though. Yeah, I mean, at 4:30.
Matthew, they're going to be sworn in on that date if you want to, the two board members, a couple county officials will be sworn in. What time do you want to do that?
Probably 4:00 then.
Okay.
Is that adequate?
Yep.
Is, do we need to just get all the other newly-elected folks sworn in on that same time?
No, it's just the, yeah, and then traditionally, that's when you do it, but I'm just, I was just concerned about having a judge here to do that, if you do it at 4:00 o'clock.
Yeah, you might not catch one at 4:00.
I think...
Then we'll, then we'll make the swearing-in at, at 4:00 PM and then the regular meeting at 4:30?
Yes.
All right.
If that works for everyone. Sounds good.
Works for me.
All right, looks like we are at our set time for secondary roads' first reading of the compression brake use ordinance.
As you introduced, county, we're discussing compression brake ordinance. This will be the first reading of the ordinance. We have eight locations that are proposed to limit the use of compression brakes, one on US 20 near Lawton, County Road K-49 north of Lawton, US 20 on either side of Mobile, County Road D-38 from Old Lakeport Road east to Elk Creek Road Buchanan south. We have subdivisions just lining that road and houses as well. US 75 bypass beginning at the Highway 20 interchange, that would be at Gordon, and proceeding north to 28th Street Outer Drive, the city limits meanders through there. The city limits already has an engine brake ordinance, albeit unsigned. The rural county area does not. Iowa Highway 141 beginning at Dillon Avenue and continuing west to the intersection of 141 and County Road K-45, that's Old 75, and County Road K-45 known as Old 75, beginning quarter-mile north and ending a quarter-mile south of the city limits of Salix. County Attorney's Office and my office have had varying requests adding up to these seven. Joshua had been working with City of Lawton. The City of Mobile and City of Salix, or City of Sloan, I should say, were already covered by ordinances 14 and 20. The goal of this ordinance is to combine all of them under one cover. They'll take whatever name the auditors, whatever number the auditor's office assigns to us for this ordinance.
I'm supportive of this, Mark. I just wonder, how is this ever enforced? How does that work? Does somebody say, "That truck, I got the license plate," and then the guy says, "I didn't do that."
I, I think it's a matter of when the sheriff's department or motor vehicle enforcement or the state patrol or the Mobile City Police are sitting with a speed trap in these locations. Sioux City Police would also be able to enforce it. I regularly see motor vehicle enforcement and sheriff's department at Mobile and Lawton both.
Okay.
And if they heard that as they were popping hill, it would be one more thing they could pull people over for.
Okay. Maybe it's a deterrent, just having the awareness, maybe?
Yeah, that, that would be the hope, that trucks would see the signs and respect them. And I think that's part of the reason we have a problem now. Those signs either have been knocked down over the years and not maintained, or for whatever reason, never had been posted, because I haven't observed the signs at any of the locations currently covered by ordinance 14 or 20.
Okay.
DOT will put up all the signs and pay for the installations on the ones that are on state highways. The county will be responsible for those that are on our highways. So, the ones at Salix, on D-38, and K-49 would be the responsibility of the county.
I presume there'll be an except in an emergency clause in the ordinance?
There is not.
There isn't?
No. The current ordinance does not make any exceptions on that issue. I think that would be up to the arresting officer.
Well, because I know, at least when we first passed the city one years ago, I only, I know one person that got pulled over for it, Jeremy, in all the years since they passed it, and the guy told him there was a dog ran out in front of him, so he had to do it quick as he could. Okay.
To me, it doesn't activate quite as quickly as the air brakes would.
But he said he did them both. And again, it's, it's a feel-good ordinance.
Yes.
It really is. Such a minimal cost, I have no problem with it, but I wouldn't look for any great enforcement real quickly.
He's too busy chasing ATVs over there, so...
Yep. Now, they wave at them, remember?
So, I guess my question is, if we don't have noise ordinance in the county, how is this, how does this overlap or mesh or whatever, Mr. Whitman? Or is it because it's going through municipalities and the city limits?
Well, it's not necessarily noise-related, it's something...
Well, it's all noise-related.
Yeah.
That's all it's about. I mean, they regularly rattle our windows there in Mobile, and, you know, as soon as they let off that accelerator, you hear the...
Well, that's the beef, is the noise.
Right.
There's no other complaint.
The thing is, they don't have to be set that loudly. I, there is a way to vary that where they are not...
They want you to know they're coming.
I suppose that could be true. We have our trucks equipped for them, all of the large trucks, and for us, we're talking about emergencies, it can be a little bit of a safety issue. When our trucks start to slide, for instance, when they're out plowing snow and such, I've seen that engine brake kicking in correct that, that slide that the snowplow might begin to take. It's, it's interesting to see how the mechanics of that compression brake work. We also don't have ours set to rattle windows, but it does, it can make a difference in controlling the vehicle.
Everybody jumped in before you had a chance to add serious question.
Yeah, I, so the ordinance, it, the violation is based on the use of the compression brake. Now, the noise that results from it is probably evidence that would be used in a prosecution of it, but the noise itself is not what's the ordinance is targeting, it's the, the use of the brakes. So, I think that's the distinction. Some of the difficulties back when there was some discussion of a county noise ordinance was related to enforcement and how do you measure the level of noise and things like that, and I don't think we run into those issues with this particular ordinance.
Okay. Sir?
If this is the county ordinance, $100 fine, does the county get all the $100, or how's this $100 split up, seeing as our ordinance?
I think on county infractions, it goes to the general fund. There'd still be court costs on top of that that would go to the state.
Will we get the $100 fine?
I believe, I believe so.
Don't start counting your dollars too quick.
It's the first way to get a mobile four-way stop. I guarantee you're going to get trucks mad that you've got to stop, so they're going to jig break going down, so I'd set somebody up.
Mr. Butler, how do you feel about that four-way stop sign on Highway 20 at Mobile?
It's only one in the state of Iowa on Highway 20.
Kind of a unique situation, isn't it?
Very unique, or super highway. But there's where we could possibly get some money.
Yeah.
They'll be jig breaking. That's all I got.
Tell us how you really feel for this.
That's your revenue.
Do we need...
That might be the county donut fund.
Wouldn't be enough.
No, not at the cost of a dozen donuts now, even at Casey's.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
No.
Was it a public hearing? Wasn't this first reading?
No, it was just the first reading.
It was first reading, that's all.
Just the first reading, all right.
Just approve the first reading.
I'd approve the first reading and set the second reading for the compression brake use ordinance for December 4th, 2018.
Second.
I said it.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddig. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Pass this five to zero.
Thank you.
So, we got them both down in one fell swoop, right? Any other reports on committee meetings, Mr. Raddig or Potabom?
I do, just go ahead and do a motion for the second reading to set the...
Some of, December 4th, 2018.
Please.
Please.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Potabom. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Those opposed say nay. Round two of citizen concerns.
I got one.
If he complains about the jig breaks, I'm throwing him out of here.
No, it's not about jig breaks, it's not about ATVs. It's, it's a little good news. Woodbury County had two bridges selected to participate in the federal innovative construction bridge program. Those two bridges are being submitted as part of a $46 million request to Federal Highway Administration for bridge replacements on the state, county, and city system. This was a bill passed by Congress earlier this year. We've been working with the Department of Transportation on a multi-jurisdictional application. It's a competitive application among, I think, 26 of the 50 states are eligible. It's based on population, so it's primarily designed for rural states. Iowa has the highest number of efficient bridges by percentage in the nation, and I forget how many city and county bridges. One of the things that's required is bridge bundling. We're going to find ourselves partnered with Lyon County on this process. The application is due to Federal Highway Administration December 4th. It's being submitted by the DOT on behalf of the state on November 30th, so that has the potential to bring Woodbury County right about a million and a half dollars. We would be matching the cost. It's 75% federal participation is what's proposed, so 25% would be coming out of our, our federal aid swap money. So, there would be no money either from our foreign market or from our local system that would be involved with the replacement of these two structures. One of the structures is south of Mobile on Mobile Blacktop, the first bridge south of town. It was already in our five-year program, that's one of the reasons it was selected. The other one is on County Road L-36, just north of D-38. So, this would be the road that comes south out of Correctionville, down near the intersection where it ties into County Road D-38 that proceeds west to Anthem, just to give you an idea where the two structures are. There was a third bridge eligible, but that's Haskell Avenue Bridge, and I didn't want to postpone its letting by two years. So, we have it permitted and ready to go. That's something else we need to have a discussion on. City of Mobile wants to make some proposals on Frontage Road, so I like that even less than Haskell Avenue, but they, they have some thoughts. We're meeting on Friday on that, so.
Okay.
Would any of you be available Friday afternoon at 1:00 to maybe sit in on that?
Where at?
My office. Any board member would be welcome to. I don't know if you want to duck out or not.
Is Mr. Gleiser going to be there?
Yes, I believe so. Mr. Schultz and Mayor Fisher.
I could probably be there unless anybody else wants to.
I don't think it would hurt for a couple of board members to, to hear what their thought is. They've asked me to delay the Haskell Bridge to March so that we can, they can have some discussion, and one of the last words that they heard was when Supervisor Ung Taylor and I attended a chamber meeting last year in 2017. When was that, about November, Jeremy, 2017? And, you know, they were looking for, the board members basically told them to contact me when they had a proposal for what they wanted to do about Frontage Road. We weren't going to add it to the program until they had some concrete ideas of what they were going to achieve and how it was going to be built and how it was going to be funded. That's part of what they wanted to discuss this week, so it's not ready to necessarily come before the whole board. Currently, our marching orders, which we're ready to go with, is to let the Haskell Avenue Bridge. One of the reasons I'm holding off till March is I want to see how much the project on D-50, that grading project, is going to cost me first. I might have to adjust that schedule just a little bit more depending on where that cost comes in.
Okay.
Those are the two things I wanted to bring up today and make you aware of.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that said, do you plan on going to that Friday then, or?
Might have to bring a four-year-old, but he's good.
Then I'm going to plan on being there too. Any other citizen concerns? Sir?
I was contacted by Juliette Everts this morning, and Kenny called me first, and he couldn't remember... he couldn't remember if we brought this, brought this to the full board. On April 6th, they are planning to have their 100th anniversary of her Sousse Symphony, and they're going to have what they call the Space Odyssey, and they wanted to use the courthouse lobby on a Saturday. Kenny and I met with them, and Jeremy, she contacted Jeremy, Jeremy passed on to us, and we met with them. So what it involves, it's a program on April 6th, on a Saturday, from 4:00 to 7:00, they have the Woodbury County Rotunda for a dinner, catered by Aggies. They do all the setup. They cover the beer license, or liquor, whatever they're going to have, they cover that. From 7:00 to 9:00, they have the Orpheum, Orpheum Theater Concert. 9:00 to 11:30, they have Woodbury County Courthouse Rotunda Afterparty. And what that's going to involve is going to be a laser light show somewhat, and they talked to Kenny about bringing a generator in the back here to run more power into the courthouse. They have this laser show. It's going to be quite a, it's going to be quite a deal. We have tentatively told her, yes, because we didn't know, we had to go before the whole board to do this. I think the whole board should be aware of it, should approve it, but this is something, it's a one-time deal. They kind of wanted to make it exclusive nonprofit for them only, and I said the board will probably never go for that. I took the attitude to say that, because you aren't going to limit just them.
Dennis, what do you mean by exclu, can you just elaborate in a sentence or two more? What are you meaning by exclusive?
They were asked that if they could be the only nonprofit to use a lobby for the year.
Yeah, that, okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
For the year.
Thank you.
I said you'd have to ask on an individual event deal. The board probably will never just allow one nonprofit to come in, nor other, like the adoption people, any other groups we've had come in. So, and she understood it after she asked. So that was covered there.
Why would they ask that, Dennis?
Yes. Is that Matthew?
Sorry, why would they have exclusive annual rights?
They'd have to go per date. They'd have to come back and ask if they could do it. Now, this would be a one-time thing, because it's their 100th anniversary. So I don't anticipate, but they did talk once about having a gala December 15th, and that's what we thought she was calling about, but it was not. I said that's never been taken aboard, never approved by the board to have it. So she understood that, so we're back on April 6th, one. They would pay for the courthouse security, or any costs that we would incur, they're going to pay for it.
Matthew's question was, why would they ask for exclusive for an annual?
That's a good question, because we just told them it wouldn't happen. The board, I don't believe, would limit one group exclusive rights to the courthouse. And Kenny was pretty emphatic on that, too. And I'm assuming, maybe I assume too much, that the board would just allow one group to come here, and that's the only group to ever come in here. And she understood that.
I think that's a lot to ask myself, but I think that's a lot to ask.
Yep. So it is quite an extravaganza. It is their special deal for Sousse Symphony. It's an invitation only. They sent invites, and she's going to mail them out right this week. That's why she called, to reaffirm that we had all this. I said, Kenny, I don't know if it's been taken before the full board. He didn't know either. But I'm assuming the board would probably do it. They're going to pay for the cost, but it's something that's totally different than what we've done in the past. We start throwing a laser show in here and everything else. But they're going to furnish the power for that, too. It'd be quite an event.
I just want to clarify. Matthew, maybe you can clarify this. We've talked about this with the Policy Review Committee. Did you want to answer that, or do you want me to?
In regards to not giving exclusive rights to any group, because it's not currently, there's no precedent for it?
No. We've discussed it before, is that there, every time an event comes before the full board, it's not something this chairperson would allow, and that the county attorney has talked to us before, that if it got to be an issue, there should be a policy. But traditionally, it's always been handled by the full board on a case-by-case basis.
That's right.
So given that...
You're in a tough area if you start saying no to one and yes to another. That's just the way it is. But for a group to ask for exclusive rights and, and therefore exclude other groups, that's, that's obviously too much to ask.
So Pat, would we need to have a motion in order, would that on the agenda subsequently?
That's what you've always done in the past, is that you approve it on a case-by-case basis.
So it'd have to be on a future meeting?
Yes.
So my question would be, do I have to come back next week with this memo here to get it passed?
Yes, please.
I love the idea of it being used.
And I think my thinking, and I didn't make any promises.
You made no promises, no.
But my thinking was the nature of it being 100th anniversary, along with the 100th anniversary, that we just had, you know, that there was something where it wasn't just, you know, the Rollarama was closed and a group of kids was coming, you know, because they needed space, sort of thing. So it seemed to fit within the, you know...
All I keep thinking of is that dome with the laser light show.
Right, right.
And they are tax-supported, too. They're nonprofit, but also tax-supported by Sioux City, because they do levy money taxes for it. So it's totally nonprofit, supported by tax dollars. So it makes sense, but I'll bring it back next week.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Any other citizen concerns? Any board concerns? I have one. Would anybody like to go, and I believe it's Marty's Committee for LHA, and I might be the backup, but neither one of us can make the next meeting on December 5th. Would anybody be interested? And I believe that that's kind of an important one. They have quarterly ones that...
It's a Wednesday?
Yes.
What time is it at?
First one starts at 9:00, I believe, in Pisgah. The best thing, other than all the things you learn down there, is you can have lunch at the former Old Home Filler up in Keep On A Truckin' Cafe.
I'm in.
They, they do have pretty good food.
Are those all of us old enough to remember that?
My grandpa talked, told me about it. That's the only reason I know.
I'm not ashamed to say.
Maybe Mr. Ung would like to go?
I'll check. I don't think so, though.
Any other board concerns? We are adjourned.